I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, June 26, 2013, to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Thank you. And has the meeting been properly posted, Ms. State?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, item three, is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would Mr. Ritter like to make a comment?
I'll do a speech.
All right, thank you. Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Sleder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Does any board member have an announcement?
Athletic Association had their golf putting on Friday. Well-run event, even in spite of the rain, but the rain, we only had an hour delay and it was fun. Right, Alan.
Correct.
Yes.
Good.
And they did not win the putting contest, that Judy was running.
Great.
Close.
All right, any other announcements? Hearing none. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, July 17, 2013, 6:00 PM here at the Education and Community Center. Regular board meeting Wednesday, August 21, 2013, here at 5:30 PM. And following that, the annual meeting of the electors, Wednesday, August 21, 2013, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM. And item eight is the budget discussion. And we'd like to open up a discussion with Mr. Milzer and any board members who'd like to bring any items forth.
I did receive some questions and I sent those out, the answers by email. I have another group to send out, I just not quite finished with those yet, so I'll get those out to you as soon as I can.
Can I ask?
Did those go out today? Because I didn't log on today.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, later yesterday.
The afternoon, I think.
Okay.
That was very helpful. Thanks for taking the time to do that. Reference the rec department. Do you foresee a loss for somewhat this summer due to the pool being closed and?
I don't think so, because that program in itself loses money.
Oh, okay.
The lessons and the pool.
We'll lose more money?
Kind of thing, so. So we aren't employing the staff to do that, so I don't think it'll hurt the program at all.
Okay. So it's going to even out?
Yeah.
Ish?
Right.
I have a question about the rec department also, actually. I noticed, I believe that budget 2010, 2011 was the last time, that the, their report was in our budget document. And I don't know if that was what our committee decided or not when we reformulated this budget document, you know, to leave it out or not, I can't recall. But regarding the swim program, have we made a decision yet whether that's going to be renewed or not, you know, besides just this summer?
Right. So far, we're looking at two years because of what's going on at the high school. And based on that and the fact that the program really doesn't do well for us monetarily anyway, we're looking at a number of different avenues to work that. One of them being having the local business pick it up and run the sessions so that people wouldn't have to drive very far. Let's say we made an agreement with another school district, although we did check with every school district in the area and they were either fully booked or doing something to their pool during the summer as well, so we weren't able to just transport our program to their location. We tried that first. So right now, we're scheduled to have the business run those sessions for the next two, next two years, next two summers, this summer and next summer. And then after that, we could make a decision as to, you know, which way to go on it.
Will that be a board decision?
I don't think it would be a board decision, no. It's the rect programs on whether they're offering them or not, but it would matter on how the community felt about it, which you might have feedback on, on if they want to see that program run, if they, you know, if they want to see it run. It could be that we'd have to revamp it somehow so that it, you know, wasn't a money loser, a big money loser over time, but we could take a look at that again.
Brad comes in every year and does a report, right? From, for the rec department?
Right.
Maybe he could speak to that.
Sure.
When he comes in. I don't know when he's scheduled to, but.
Yeah.
Just kind of see how, what his thoughts are on that.
Mm-hmm.
Because whether it's a money loser or not, I mean, it's something that I think, well, that's certainly a consideration. I don't know if that should be the only consideration, because it's a community.
I'm paraphrasing, it's not, it's not the only consideration, because there's, there's vying uses of the pool. There's the swim team and the students at the high school that want to use it, and then their program keeps getting bumped or pared down or moved around, kind of thing. And then with the entrance to the school being really difficult to get to this summer and next, then that just kind of raised that issue and that was kind of the end of it. That was really the impetus for this at this point.
So it's all fenced off this summer? You think it'll be like that, it's going to be like that next year?
Well, I see next, next summer, they're going to be inside the building ripping things apart, so in some ways, it could be worse.
But during the school year, they're still going to do the, do we know?
I don't think so. I think they were going to leave the program alone to run off-site as it was and then kind of see how that goes.
Jim?
Yeah?
Can I ask about the concession stand? Because I'm still struggling with that. And the thing that I was reading about it and I never saw any plans or anything that we did, and I guess last time I asked, you said that yes, the board was presented with something and we saw it. Okay? But I'm thinking $1.1 million, and I made the connection, if I were building a home for $1.1 million, I would have built just one hell of a house. And this is supposed to be a concession stand and restrooms. I just, I can't make the connection with how that's going to cost $1.1 million.
We can bring in, I talked to Dr. Patz about it, he'll send out the information after he gets back from vacation.
Well, I'm meeting with Mark on Friday. Has he got some detail on that?
Sure.
Can he help me?
Yeah.
Does the whole board want to see this detail?
I had that question also to Jim.
I want to emphasize, we weren't, I'm sorry, we weren't, we didn't have a presentation on that. We were emailed the plans, I looked it up, we were emailed the plans back in March and we never had a presentation.
And the plans were just, were just renderings, three-dimensional renderings? There were no floor plans or cost?
Yeah, we never received the cost until this budget.
So I'm as in the dark as you are. I feel the same way about.
Okay.
So I talked to Dr. Patz about it, he said he'd send that out after he got back. But certainly, if you meet with Mark, he can show you that, because there's a lot of grade changes and so forth in the area that have to be done to get rid of all of the slopes and everything and try and make it better for people to traverse or to meet in that area, those kinds of things.
And I remember a comment about the, running the sewer line as far as they have to do it was very expensive, but I just couldn't, I'm still struggling with the sum of the costs.
Sure.
Hitting that amount.
If we could, and kind of piggyback on that, expand on maybe who is, are we doing the generaling in the district? Do we hire a general? Are we piggybacking with the CG Schmidt project? Are they handling it? The different bids we put up for it? Just stuff like that would be good to know.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, it's, we wanted to keep it as far away from the referendum project as possible so we didn't mix anything with that contractor's, people working on it, anything like that. But it was a local company that will be doing the work, Marso, which is, they took over Mark Carstensen's work.
Oh, yeah.
His company.
And there were multiple bids on it.
Right.
So the construction's already been bid?
Right. Right. Yeah. So like I said, I'll have Dr. Patz send you that information. I did talk to him today or yesterday, I don't remember which one it was, and he said he would get that out after he got back. Okay.
So I guess I'm still confused as to when we authorized the funds for that. Could you clarify? Is it in this budget that we have yet to approve?
I think you'd want to talk to Dr. Patz about that.
Okay.
From the last time when I asked a question, I think you said that we talked about it, I said, well, can the board stop this yet? And you said, yes, that could be done. So I'm not sure that it's been authorized. I think with the authorization of this budget, it's authorized. Right? Because it's in this budget.
Yeah, the board doesn't really authorize the projects that are done during the year. I guess that would be the piece of it. But again, I think if it's a question on that or how the project's working or all of that, you'd have to ask Dr. Patz about that.
Okay. Question on the integration aid. It reads in here, integration aid down due to fewer students is, maybe I just want to understand what the integration aid relates to, because our students enrollment's actually up.
Right. This would be, integration aid is Chapter 220 students.
Okay.
So that number of students is down while we're up in total.
Okay. With what you just said about the board doesn't authorize projects, did the board not authorize the fiber optic project, the $800,000 for that? Yes, we did.
Right. On that project.
How's this different?
On that project, you did. Again, I'd refer to Dr. Patz.
Okay. Are there any other budget?
I had a whole series of questions. I guess it's going to be hard to have a discussion without the answers, but I hope I can ask a few of them, Jim, if I keep them general.
Sure.
Does the revenue limit include debt service expenditures?
No.
So when I'm looking at, on page 10, the $1.9 million increase in long-term debt, it does not impact that? Does not go against our limit?
No, because it's approved by the community.
Okay. And so then the levy that we're seeing there, the $28.9 million for 13, 14 for educating children, is that, is that to the limit then, or does that represent us?
Yes. Right. That represents the revenue limit.
I guess I'm, so there wouldn't be an increase because the increase in state aid offset that?
Right. Mm-hmm. We received additional, no, we're estimating that we're going to receive additional equalization aid, which drives the tax levy down or doesn't have it increase as much.
Did we budgeted the extra $150 per student that was just passed in the state budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess also, in looking at the capital projects fund, on page 14, I was really confused by the, I think it's a negative fund balance of $19,250,000. And I guess where are the bond proceeds budgeted or accounted for?
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Yeah, that should be in there. That revenue amount should be in there so that we wouldn't have a negative fund balance there. I'll make that change. Yeah. The debt service fund is where we pay back for debt.
Right, I see.
But in Fund 49, that's where our proceeds go after we get them. And so that, that needs to be in that fund to match. And the $19 million is an estimate of the amount of work that would be done during this year. It could be different, and we have, more than that, we have the $33 million, but we're just estimating that that's about how much work would be done this year.
And we are earning interest on those proceeds, is that correct?
Right.
And where is that accounted for?
Well, I don't have an amount in for revenue at all, so it's, right now, it's not accounted for in there, but we'll, you know, we'll obviously receive, even though the market's down, we'll receive something for interest for that one.
Is there, is there a capital budget, oh, it is right, well, you don't detail any more than in the capital fund?
No.
Independencies, just?
No, in that, in that fund, that's, that's just the high school projects. That's just the two referendum questions that pass that are being done for that.
Could you speak a little bit to, under support services, the increase in building services, transportation and maintenance, is the concession project in there? It's on page 13, sorry. Page 13, support services section.
Yes.
So of the 1.3, the 1.15 is that project?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So the other 150 or so, or $200,000 roughly would be, is there, I didn't get, is there a schedule that details that that I just may have missed, or is that just, what do you think that increases for?
In the, the more detailed information in the back, there would be more information on that. Let's see what page that would be.
And then that's probably where the detail on the technology.
35.
Page 35?
Yeah. So you can see in the, in the maintenance budget, that would really be the lion's share of that. At 1.24 million. And then there's smaller increases elsewhere.
On page 39, why is the food service budget not balanced?
Food service, that would be two things. One, as we've said from time to time, food service is carrying a fund balance here that DPI thinks is too high for not having a project coming up, like if you're redoing a kitchen or buying a vehicle or something like that. They'd like to see it lower. So that's one factor in there. The other factor is that right now, we're in the middle of a long shift in the National Food Service Lunch Program of changing the way the food is delivered and the type of food that's delivered and also the pricing. Right now, the federal government is mandating price increases for school districts, and it's one of those where you have several years to get to the target that they set for you and say is what you should be spending and what you should be charging. And because we're part of the program, we really don't have a choice there, so over several years now, we're increasing the prices a little bit each year to try and hit that target by the time it gets here rather than just jumping the prices up. And of course, as the price goes up, people back off on their usage of the lunch program. So right now, we're in kind of a mix on how that's working. So between, between our fund balance, which will tide us over and the instability, I'd say, of the demand and the program right now, that's why we end up right there. So we're, we're hoping that turns around. We're also looking at, you know, different alternatives and things to how that works or if kids aren't going to take, if so many kids aren't going to take lunch, we're going to scale back on what we're doing, or if there are ways to work around the program as well. But right now, that's, that's what's going on, so.
What kind of price increases are you proposing?
Each year, it's a.
What's in this budget?
10 cents, something like that. I'd have to look to be sure, but it's, it's not too much, but in total, when we looked at it when we first started, it was, you know, 70 or 80 cents a lunch or something like that.
What's the rationale behind forcing us to charge more for lunches? I mean, if our expenses aren't in line, why do we have to charge more?
That's an excellent question. I have no idea why we have to charge, why there would be a rule about that. I can see, I can see the rule on the.
Why do they care what we charge for lunch?
You know, they, they want us to serve a certain type of lunch or they want to change their guidelines, I guess that's one thing, but forcing us to charge more, I don't understand that.
But that's coming down from the federal government?
Yes.
That we need to charge more for our lunches?
Right.
What does that mean? It's ridiculous.
Right now, our costs are exceeding our revenue, so there is a gap. I guess it's only the budget. What's the $138,000 playing for, the increase in the items under $300?
Last year, that's an item that's really a mistake in this year's budget. There's an amount that we have to book for the value of the free stuff that we get and the delivery and all of that. And that was not in this year's budget, but it is in next year's budget. So next year's budget isn't oh-so-different from this year's actual, I guess is probably where we'll come out. But it's an area that used to run very well and we made money every year and kids ate all the meals and now it's, it's in, it's shifting. And we have to figure out how to get through and get through the regulations as well as what the students want to eat or want to pay to eat at school to make this come back in line again.
Jim, can you redo that explanation on $138,000? Because what I think you said was that last year, there was something for free food that we have to book something as an expenditure, but it's free, so it's really not an expenditure. And so we didn't book it last year, but we're booking it this year, so we're booking something that we're not going to spend money on?
Yeah, we didn't have it.
What am I missing?
We didn't have it in the budget, so it will, it will come out in the actual expenditures. But we get, we get free, we get free things.
We put it in the budget, not, and we don't really spend it?
Uh.
Because it's free food?
The other way, it wasn't in the budget and it'll be in the actual.
Right, we're getting, yeah, we're, we're getting the food free, but it has to be delivered to us and there's a delivery charge and there's a this charge and a that charge.
Oh.
So it's kind of like something free on your credit card or, you know, let me give you a free paper, but I'm not going to let go of it because I want you to get it for a year. That's similar to this.
Okay. I think I understand. Thanks.
On page 44, it talks about implementing a new program in a social skills curriculum? Or two social skills programs? Can you tell us what, I'm not sure we have information on that. I don't know.
Yeah, I would have, I would have to have Ms. Kroll talk about that. That's one of the things I'd have to have her answer and get back to you as one of your questions.
Is the Saber Academy still funded with a grant?
No.
When did, when did the grant end? I know it was, it's recently, right, or?
Recently. I don't remember if it was last year, could have been last year that it ended and then it was partially gone the year before that. We got a five-year grant that I think only lasted two years.
Because it says in a weight, so.
It was.
So it's funded within our budget now?
Right. Right.
I hope this is an easy answer, but I could not figure out what PBIS stood for. Anybody else get that one?
Yeah, that's the behavior program.
Positive behavior.
Positive intervention.
Behavior intervention, something.
Support.
Support. When they reward the kids during the year with.
Behavior intervention system or?
Support. I think it's support. It's like a citizenship program for school.
A lot of them get coupons during the year for having positive behavior and that's like it, some of the assemblies, like at Robinwood, they get to cut his tie during assembly or the, things like that. Do you know some of the other ones, Judy?
So it's highlighted though on page 44 as the first of a three-year commitment. So does that involve money or just something we do?
Yeah, and I think I'd have to have Ms. Kroll answer that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've probably got this information throughout the year, Judy, but the new courses, the show choir and the folk music, I can't remember, did that add FTE or is that something that they're just picking up in that department?
It did add some FTE to choir.
It did?
Okay.
Yes, it did.
It did? Overall, or I thought our FTEs were flat.
Well, it's made up somewhere else, you know.
So that area went up.
Right. So maybe it's another business class that isn't offered, so in the end, the FTE is flat. The kids take the same number of classes, it's just how they're distributed. Right, how they sign.
So it went up, but it's offset.
Right. There are some classes that are not running because of low enrollment.
Yeah.
Page 43, you do detail some of the IT items and you talk about the system-wide power backup. Do we have one now or is this our first time?
I think it's first time. I'd have to, I'd have to ask Ms. Zalinski to be sure, but I think it's the first time we've had one that encompassing. We have, we've had small power backup units on different computers that were very important in the past, but nothing integrated.
So am I envisioning a bank of batteries or some kind of diesel engine that fires up or what do we, or squirrels that take off? What do we, what does it look like?
A large jet out back. Yeah, we just fire it up. Yeah, I'm not sure what it looks like. I haven't seen it.
Okay. Can we have a little more information on that?
Mm-hmm.
Before we say?
That's, that's one of those that I'm not directly involved in.
Oh, okay.
So I, I'd have to get an answer for you.
And I did ask, I know we highlight the one-to-one initiative in the technology area, we highlight that at the beginning, so what exactly is in the budget to accomplish that? I mean, just.
Yeah, that's another one I'd have to get for you.
Okay.
Well, we're on page 43. In general, regarding printers, you know, smaller printers, are we doing more printing to our copiers instead, trying to, you know, trying to get away from printers? Because I noticed we're replacing printers that are over 10 years old at Franklin High School and then I think you mentioned replacing printers at Forest Park Middle School. And they use a lot of ink on the little printers, so I was wondering, do we use more direct printing from computers to a copy machine?
We use more than we used to. Again, I'd probably have to ask Ms. Zalinski to get a definitive answer for students, but I don't think they have students printing, let's say, to the office copier, that kind of thing. But I think you have less student printing than you did before because they have the electronic medium that can go home and come back without ever printing it. So I think that helps with it, because I haven't heard like I did six, seven years ago, the, you know, my ink budget is eating us alive, kind of a thing, or we need more money for ink or something like that. I don't hear that anymore at all. So I think that what's happened is that just they aren't printing that much as they used to.
I think Google Docs would have to have a lot to do with that. Most of it, kids are submitting papers through that medium and teachers are reviewing it through that medium. They don't really have to.
Right.
Print them out, hand them in.
Right. Not paperless, but.
Right.
It's the first little step, I think, getting used to doing it that way.
Are we looking at a managed print service where a company, you pretty much just lease all the printers and they manage it for you?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I mean, I could ask, but I haven't heard that they're looking at that, no.
'Cause that's, that's another cost-saving measure that I've experienced.
We have a company do maintenance on them. We don't generally do much maintenance ourselves on them, and I think it's pretty cheap. And then they just come through and do all the printers at once, that kinda thing.
You could pass the acquisition cost, just having a maintenance contract can be less than having the lease payment all the time. I mean, it's possible.
Right, especially if you keep them ten years.
Pardon?
Especially if you keep them ten years.
Maybe the maintenance on them isn't warranted for ten years. Age is not necessarily a predictor of cost, or lifecycle cost really is what you gotta look at, so we just can't say. Keep for ten years, so, there's no cost.
A lot of these IT purchases, were they direct from, like, from Apple, whatever, so there wouldn't be a third-party vendor involved? Or you'd have to bid it out, or, or some of these, um, through some other computer companies?
Yeah, for, um, the ones from Apple, uh, obviously are direct. We buy a lot of, even the networking things, the direct, without going through a vendor. Uh, for, um, Chromebooks, there is another company that we go through, but I'm not sure we have an option on that one. I think they're the, the one to go through on that, or at least maybe they have the state contract on it. So most of them, most of them were direct, I'd say, in dollar, dollar value, direct to the vendor, or on state contract pricing.
Were you relieved, separate from the budget real quick, were you relieved with the decision that came down about the, um, the system software change that isn't gonna be made now, or mandated, rather, so?
Yeah, I, I was.
Skyword, is that what you're saying?
Skyword, mm-hmm, yeah. I, I think it would, it would just be a better system if the Department of Public Instruction just indicated what fields they needed, what field length, what kind of information can be in, in that, and just give it to the handful of vendors that everyone uses, uh, and let them all write their software to it. And that's really what Skyword is asking for. In the beginning, they weren't, they weren't even asking to be the sole vendor, they were saying, you don't need a sole vendor, just let us know what you need. So, yeah, I think that was, there was a relief there, because there's a huge learning curve, uh, for the staff, especially, um, teachers. How do you do a grade book in the new software? How do you do everything you do in a new software, uh, now as you're trying to do other things, uh, curriculum-wise? It's just good to have a nice, steady base that way.
And unnecessary expense is something everyone's used to, so it's not like it wasn't working.
Right.
So, okay.
Was that in state budget, or is that separate action?
The budget.
Good question. Uh, what? I don't know.
I can see why you'd be confused that it's not a budget item, but, uh, it was one of those things that they cleared up.
Thought that came up before the budget, right, or was that in the budget?
I think it was in the budget.
With the budget? In the joint finance committee that came through with it?
Decided that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I know that we have, we're piloting the new compensation, or is it the teacher evaluation?
Are they the same, or are they? Very different, yeah. The compensation models are, um, locally developed. Their state is not involved in developing a compensation model at this time, so they're, they're different.
And, is there software, then? That, does that involve software, and who's paying for it?
Um, well, we have been involved with the developmental pilot this year, and we paid for portions of it. We're going to pay for some more of it next year, and then the following year, it'll be fully funded by the state. Um, I think it's incredibly advantageous for us to continue, um, moving forward, and when the state does implement, we'll be one hundred percent ready with our teaching staff and our administrators to, to, um, put in place the educator effectiveness.
But there is a cost in this budget, then?
Uh, yes.
And how much is that?
It's, it's in my HR account. It's something that I'm working through out of my existing budget.
Do you know how much it is?
Um, I, you know, I'd have to send you that specific information. Um, it was about sixty dollars per teacher. A portion of it will be funded next year, because we continue to be involved in the pilot at the state level, so they will pay for all of the teachers and administrators involved in the pilot. But I would like the remainder of our teachers to be using the software next year before the state requires that everybody use it the following year.
So all the teachers will be evaluated with the new system?
Correct.
Next school year?
Yes.
Any other any questions? I was, the student fees that are on page, um, twelve. How do those compare to the trend line that you show on seventeen? Maybe two ninety on the third and eighth row?
Uh, that line would be, uh, would include, uh, other things. When the, in the back, we list student fees, which is the fee a student pays, um, to come here. The general student fee for the elementary, middle school, or high school. Uh, that's what that one is. This one would be all student fees, um, if they went out for a sport, if they had a library fine, and it would also include the facility, uh, use, uh, fees as well, which would be outside, outside interest paying to use the facilities. So there would be more, more in that grouping.
And the amount per student that's going up, well, it went up in, uh, twelve thirteen? Is that just, uh, because of an averaging, or, or why?
It's not going up. Uh, the total going up, you mean?
Well, you're showing twen- fifty-three dollars per student.
It's just an average.
Was that collected or budgeted? I wasn't sure. It must be collected.
And that was last year, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we collected more, uh, of the fees last year, but those aren't the actual fees. The fees aren't going up. The fees themselves, per student, aren't going up.
We actually collected more when we budgeted them.
Mm-hmm. So should I just answer the rest of your questions, you know, as I work through them?
I guess that'll work.
Okay.
I think the biggest issue in the budget might just be the, uh, the concession area. The project itself, and the fact that it uses fund balance to such a high level, does concern me. Because, um, you know, it's a lot of fund balance. Could it be used for other things? I don't know why, uh, you know, why now we would, we'd do the concession stand? And what your, uh, and I understand it's part of a, a bigger plan?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, it's the board. I don't recall seeing the bigger plan, I guess.
Okay.
And what would be the timeline to finish the plan?
When you say the plan, you mean the bigger plan, or just the concession stand, the timeline for that? Which one are you referring to?
I think there's a plan for the athletic area.
Okay.
I'm just, yeah, 'cause I don't think I, unless it's, was that part of the referendum picture?
I think it was part of the master plan on the referendum that I recall seeing. It had, you know, some added athletic facilities, you know, kind of a wish list sort of thing. I don't recall specifically, no, I think it did have a concession thing built in as part of like a master plan.
On the referendum?
Not, not what went to referendum, but in our pre-planning, and there was a master plan that was, that was put together.
I think it was part of the survey.
And it was part of the survey as well.
And, and, and not to speak for the administration, but I think when the survey results came back, the athletic facilities scored low, low enough that it wasn't part of the questions that were put out there for the referendum. But there was enough community, uh, interest in that, that they were gonna look to do things outside of a referendum, but yet within the budget, to, um, address some of the conditions. Um, I think Forest Park Middle School is one of those things that they're, you know, looking, we need to do something there. We just don't know how we're gonna do it. Referendum isn't working. Um, and so, there's some of the questions I got were, were, why can't we just figure out how to do this in the budget? Uh, now, there are some capital expenses that may, don't make sense to take out of cash flow if it's something that's gonna have a twenty-year useful life, but there are some things like the secure entrance, that I think made sense to do out of the budget. Um, and that's the way I'm reading how we got to where we got to on the concession area. Uh, that doesn't speak to the amount, or what's all included, the, you know, the, the plans within the, just the, the pictures that were there. Um, but, so I think diving into that makes a lot of sense, but I think that's kinda how we got to where we got to with doing it in the budget. That's my take on it.
I agree with that. If, if I could add, um, when that World Cafe occurred at the high school, in the early stages of referendum planning, it was really clear that the community was very upset about the bathroom facilities at the high school. That was really a strong message that came out that day. Those of you who were there, it was almost comical, because it was like the number-one thing that people wanted to talk about that night, at least at the tables I was at, and then the reports that I heard. They were very dismayed about the bathroom facilities by the football field. It's just my recollection.
And I think that might depend on the cross-section of community who decided to show up there, too. I mean, it may not be a hot button for everybody, but there's certainly those people out there that it is. And I think the way the referendum questions were, it was all, it was packaged in such a way where it wasn't just a question, hey, you want us to just do the concessions? It was, there was more involved in that, and that, I think, is why those questions scored lower than what they did, because the money that it would've taken to redo the full track and the full football field and everything wasn't something that the community put on a priority list.
And a part of the issue with concessions, um, and I don't know how many of you have ever volunteered in there to work, but I have, and, uh, there's no running water, so there's no way to wash dishes or anything, and I think that's a safety issue.
Or your hands.
Yes, Randy?
I was gonna say, that, that was a question to my mind, in talking about the amount of money involved. If there's no water and there's no sewer to the site, then it's gonna be considerably more than just the building. You've got to bring water, you've got to bring sewer to somewhere, and it's off there by itself. So those are, um, additional factors that could explain why it seems like a large number. Uh, just the other thing, um, the planning commission got building elevations, site plan, and floor plans for the concession and restroom facilities in the package that included the other high school materials.
Excuse me, budget questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Millsor. Item nine is liaison reports, personnel and policy report. Mrs. Larson?
Yes, you each should have, uh, should have received a copy of, or a draft of, uh, Dr. Miller's policy on virtual attendance at school board meetings with an accompanying document with information from WASB, um, regarding that attendance. Is there any questions on the floor, any discussion? Any input?
I have some input on it, for, for the board to think about, um, that, because we're comparing, one of the policies we're comparing to is the Pewaki policy, which I believe maybe you used that to, to craft this policy?
Yeah, almost entirely. There are just a few little differences in, in what I wrote, but it's, it's incredibly similar.
So, the policy we're looking at, then, for our board says, no, we will not, um, allow, um, teleconferences in closed session. So I think we have to determine, is that what we want? So, I think we have to weigh that first, because it is allowed, so we have to think that over.
So, the issue with closed session would be the, the person who's dialing in have a secure, private location, I take it?
Right, they have to verify that they are alone.
And it would have to be kind of on an honor system. Of course, us not talking about closed session afterwards is also on an honor system, so that's just one consideration.
And then again, it, it also has to be on the agenda that, that this is going to occur. The other comment I have, that I wanted the board to consider, was, um, the twelve-hour notice. I think it should be, my opinion is, is twenty-four-hour notice. I, I don't know why. It should just be out of courtesy, it should be twenty-four-hour notice. I think that is also for the sake of, I think Mr. Millsor is the one who sets it up. I just think he should know to be prepared. And all of our meetings are really held here now, but, um, on occasion, there could be one somewhere else. It's, that's just another thought to take into consideration, if a meeting is held somewhere else, uh, if it was at a school, um, thought has to be given to, can it, can it be accommodated? Because I know, um, there was a request one time to have it at one of the schools, and it would've taken way more than twelve hours to set that up. I think.
Where's the twelve hours in here? Or do you mean by noon, or where's the twelve hours?
I think I saw twelve hours in there. Twelve hours would be six AM, twenty-four would be six PM, so you're sleeping most of that time, so I don't-
Oh, I'm sorry, by noon, okay.
Oh, by noon.
But I mean, um, maybe a whole twenty-four hours in advance would be?
I think usually you know twenty-four hours ahead of time.
I just hope you would, so.
Right. I don't see an issue with that, making it twenty-four hours instead of noon.
I mean, if you come down ill, you're not gonna be wanting to teleconferencing any day.
Yeah, that, so. And that maybe we should state in here that if it's not on-site at, just at ECC, that it has to be feasible, that it can be?
Does it not read that it has to be noted in the agenda that someone will be calling in?
Yeah, so, so we have to have it in enough time.
We have to have it twenty-four hours anyway, 'cause the agenda can't be changed to twenty-four hours of a meeting.
Well, it has to be announced, it has to be announced.
Oh, okay.
At the beginning of the meeting.
Just announce at the meeting that someone will be calling in.
Yeah, at, at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, I still like the twenty-four hour, I think that's a decent change.
Uh-huh, I think so, too.
Jim, how does it work with our, our new sound system? If somebody dials in, does it, is it like they're speaking into a microphone as far as the feed and the recording goes, or?
Uh, I'd have to find out if we could work it through that way, otherwise, we would bring, um-
You just put a mic right on the speaker?
Our, yeah, our system would plug into the wall. It, uh, we use it for, uh, conference calls, that kinda thing, when we really have to talk a while and be able to be heard and understood. And we'd probably just have to mic that.
Okay.
We'll find out if that's the best way to do it or not, though.
It may be five times louder than the rest of us, or, or five times quieter, but that's okay. It doesn't happen very often. I can only remember once or twice in the three years I've been on the board where we've needed to do that.
I move that the notice be given by noon phrase be changed to twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting.
Twenty-four hour notice?
Twenty-four hour notice in advance of the meeting.
My motion, or?
I mean, I think that part about, about the facilities, oh, is there, there's a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm, I said I'd move, so I can see, I'd like to make a motion that the-
Okay, then I'll wait till discussion.
Notice be given by noon be changed to notice be given twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting.
Will you approve this tonight? Yes, well- Guess what?
Well, I.
Hospital action item.
We could approve it with the changes.
Our family changes and then the.
Ask Dr. Miller to make those changes and write and approve it with that in there.
Can do it that way, too.
Right.
If I could ask a couple more questions. Ms. Evans, what, what were you saying specifically about closed session? Do you want the board to decide whether that remains in here or not? I didn't hear the result of that, so.
I don't think we made, we didn't.
Okay. I just didn't want it to move too fast forward.
I just think it's important that we, that we point that out, that, that, you know, is this okay with everyone?
That closed session is not allowed?
Yeah.
I think we should be allowed.
So I think we need consensus on that.
Yeah. I would say if it's a closed session, closed, you're not there, you're closed off. That's my opinion. I don't think it should be allowed.
That would be my opinion as well.
But you're here teleconference, you know, if you're physically not here, too bad?
Yeah, I could see both sides. I mean, if, if we're having a closed session, it's usually a pretty critical issue that you would want as many board members' input as possible. And as a board member, you would want to be informed, but I can also see that there's kind of a security issue as well. So I don't know.
It gets a little difficult when there's artifacts as well in a closed session, if you're, something to show or hand out, and it might be difficult. I'm just trying to process that a little bit.
And we've been pretty careful about scheduling closed sessions around everybody's schedule. I mean, there are sometimes, like for expulsions, people haven't been able to make, but by and large, we've been pretty considerate of it.
And definitely, closed sessions would not be included, I mean, expulsions wouldn't be included.
Right.
Or annual meeting, because that's a public, you are a citizen at an annual meeting. So this is just a regular closed session.
Yes, we could exclude it and then change it if you really feel it's not working. I mean, which, you know, it's kind of new, so could be changed if we thought it wasn't working, but what way do you want to start out? Reviser?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I don't know why it wouldn't work.
Can you, can you say what you're saying? I don't understand what you're saying, or I couldn't hear you very clearly, or?
If we, if we adopt it, excluding closed, and we find we're not comfortable with that, or someone would make an issue with it, we can change it later.
Basically, leaving the closed session the way it's written right now.
In this document?
In this document.
Okay.
Which says that you, you can't dial in for a closed session, or at least not that portion of the meeting.
And that would be more conservative. Like you said, you pointed out the security issue. You don't know where they're dialing in from, so it'd be more conservative starting out and.
And so are you leaving in expulsion hearings, grievance hearings, and disciplinary hearings in there, too?
Right. I think the issue's only closed.
Okay. So leave as is, except for the twenty-four hour notice?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
I, I have one other question. This doesn't address video conferencing, like if someone wanted to Skype in, and, and I just want to put it out there, I'm not necessarily suggesting that, but that, that in terms of the technology might be a little tricky as well, but we have to realize that that's generally how meetings are held, using video conference now.
I personally wouldn't be in favor of Skyping because, I'm just throwing it out there, because who, who is that for, really? I mean, why couldn't you just use the telephone? I mean, throw it out there, what is Skyping for? For the person that is Skyping to see us more than seeing them? We, we can't really see that. What are we going to put their little iPad here to see them, so the audience could see? Yeah, I mean, is that what we'd have to do? Because, because the audience.
Where are they? Are they on a beach? Are they in a hotel room?
Yeah, I know. The audience, the audience would have to be able to see them. If you're going to have it there, they have to see them. Where, we have to make sure they can, we have to make sure they can hear them on the teleconference.
I don't disagree. I just want to cover the base. It is allowed.
You think that needs to be addressed, though? I mean, the fact that we may come to a consensus, and it sounds like we are, that we wouldn't be in favor of video conferencing, are you saying that that should be addressed in here, excluding it?
Oh. But could you use Skype and turn off the video? Just, as a technology, it could still be used to do audio, and you just turn off.
More issues hearing them over Skype than, but a phone, though. Sometimes the connections are.
Why wouldn't you just use a phone?
Charges or something? I don't know.
Sometimes the internet's a better connection. If you're out of the country, for example, that's going to be much better to use the internet.
But there are internet phone services, too, though, that are just audio.
I'd just say we shouldn't use Skype as a, but just to limit video, I guess.
I'm not suggesting, and I just, I just wanted to bring it up in case someone brought it up after the policy was approved, that, you know.
If technology changes in the future such that, you know, we, we want to change the policy, we can always do that. But I agree at this point in time, I don't think it's really necessary.
I mean, do we have the proper capabilities for it to be clear and, and easy to set up?
Easy?
Yeah. Okay, efficiently, efficiently.
I was going to throw the question at Jim. I'm not a Skype user, but with your knowledge of technology, if we don't have a, something where they can see us set up when they call in, then it's just a telephone call, right? I mean, they, they have to get to something with a video monitor on it.
Well, they, they could use a laptop, and we could have a laptop here. They would be able to see whatever's in front of the computer, so if we put it here facing the board, they would be able to see the board, or if we had it here facing the audience, they'd see the audience, and the audience would see their face. You would see their face if it's over there. If it's turned to their chair like they're sitting there, no one will see anything.
Well, it could be facing that screen right there.
Or it could be plugged into this in some manner, in which they would see what's on this screen.
We could project them up on the screen behind you.
The head would be there, and then they would see what's going on here.
Be the price to pay for being out of town.
I, I agree with, I agree with Ms. Wackowski.
She'd just be absent.
I think that you, you start with a policy and you see how it works. It's a brand-new policy. You can bring this policy back at any time, make revisions to it based on your needs.
I agree.
And addressing Janet's earlier point about the technology being available, I, I sort of think that's covered in the, in the part where it says with the permission of the board president. It's not, it's not like it guaranteed that they'll always be able to dial in, so if there's not the technology available at that particular meeting, then they just won't be given permission. Do you guys think that's covered? Yeah.
Good point.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve policy eight-three-zero-five, virtual attendance at board meetings as revised, changing that if notice is given twenty-four hours in advance of the day of the meeting?
Yes, I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extension. Motion carries. Thank you. Item ten, reports. We have human resources report, ratify the Franklin Education Association and Franklin's School Board twenty-twelve-thirteen wage agreement, and that is an action item. I don't know that there's really a report on that, and that, I'm just getting mine back here. That is, sorry, I'm having trouble here. I'm, I'm looking for a motion as, here we go. Motion to ratify the Franklin Education and Franklin School Board twenty-twelve-twenty-thirteen wage agreement that provides a two-point-seven increase in the total base wage for the contract period July first, twenty-twelve, through June thirtieth, twenty-thirteen pursuant to Wisconsin statutes one-eleven-point-seven-zero. Do I hear that motion?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion?
Yes. What is Wisconsin statute one-one-one-point-seven-zero, and why does it need to be part of the motion?
Has to do with our obligation to negotiate with the teachers for a wage agreement.
Does it reference the, the C P I or anything of that nature?
Not specifically, no. Just that we must negotiate. I can look it up for you. Doesn't take me too long. Unfortunately, don't have all the statutes memorized. Okay, it says as a, let me see here. Has to do with being a municipal employer. There's a variety of sections here, but sub-one, sub-A refers to collective bargaining, which is the statute that we have always referenced to ratify a contract, because under law, we are required to collectively bargain. Although it's limited, we still are under law required to bargain.
This is the only area that we actually can collectively bargain, on the wages, right?
Wages, ba, on base wage, right.
Mm-hmm. So is this a requirement of teacher contracts or contracts in general? Because we have other unions that we.
Correct. All unions.
All unions.
Yeah, that was the Act Ten change.
Yeah, I can read you more of it if you'd like. It's a municipal employer.
I'm just trying to remember if our other motions to, that we recently had, had that reference. Just I can quickly look at them.
It refers to the bargaining process and our obligation to engage in it.
Is there any other discussion? And this is a retroactive increase, correct?
Yes, it is.
Hearing none, can we have a rule call, please?
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
And Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Seven-zero pass.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. And the next item is the item ten-B treasures report. And that's Mrs. Wackowski.
Sorry, I read this. It's my first treasure report.
Right.
So, as of June twenty-thirteen, in the general fund, we have twenty-four million three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And debt service fund, we have two million five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And prior to July seventeenth, we anticipate cash requirements in the amounts of four million for the June thirtieth and July fifteen payrolls and accounts payable.
Thank you. Any questions?
Did we get our funds from the state? Because I think last month, this, the general fund balance was eighteen million.
Mm-hmm, right.
So we must have got.
Yeah, in the last ten days, there've been several payments for a number of different types of aid we get from the state. That's what I saw, was at the end of the year. That's the end of the year.
Yeah, we're kidding, really.
And, you know, and looking at this as the treasurer, it doesn't really say what this twenty-four million really is. You know, what line is it? Is it, is it cash? Is it, you know, what is that number? Can we just add some information to the report? Clarify that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven, board meeting debriefing. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, hearing none. Item twelve, future agenda items. We have twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen district budget update on July seventeenth, and then the music curriculum review executive summary on July seventeenth. And then we're hoping for a board handout, handbook update. It's sometime in the future, hopefully before our next board retreat, if Dr. Patz can arrange for that to be done. And item thirteen, is there a motion for an adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. leaders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion, I mean, meeting is adjourned at seven oh four.